I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position and also please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Allen Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Williams is absent today. Councilwoman Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a forum president, our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Cannon to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pleasure of the process.
Let us pray. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the day that you've given us, God. We thank you, Lord, for the sunshine, God, and we thank you for the rain you've given us, God. We ask for it to be with this meeting, God, let it be a peaceful meeting, God, and that people just understand how the City of Gaston works, God. We love you, God, and we praise you, and we thank you for everything you do for us and everything we have. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we'll have Mr. Josh from the AMA to give us an update.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
We can do better than that.
Good morning.
It's been a long day outside. I realize everybody's sneezing their heads off, but beautiful day to enjoy. I wanted to give a couple of updates today, one of those, of course, being COVID. Just wanted to give you a current look at the numbers, where we stand. Numbers continue to trend down, which is very good news. Our current ICU capacity in the City of Gaston, 80 percent, which is dramatically better than what it previously was. We, at the highest point, were about 104 percent. We were actually above capacity. Our seven-day average cases are 1.71 cases a day, and that is a wonderful number. Still, the sad number that we have is the 345 folks who unfortunately succumbed to COVID or COVID-related illnesses. Our doubling days, which if you remember those, that is how long it would take us to double our volume or the number of cases that we have. That stands at 1,000 days now, which is phenomenal, really wonderful number. Vaccine administration has gone up, which is also good. More folks are carrying the vaccine, especially a lot of the off-site doctor's offices, a lot of the pharmacies are carrying now, the Johnson &amp; Johnson one-shot, so you don't have to worry about coming back. But our averages on vaccines, we've been averaging almost 400 vaccinations a day, which, you know, we're still having a challenge, just so everybody is aware. It's still a challenge for the Department of Public Health to get as many vaccines as we need. Some days, there will be shipment that comes in, that there's a little bit left out of, that they can carry over to the next day, but it's still somewhat of a challenge for us to get it locally. School numbers, you'll all remember last week with spring break, so our numbers were kind of low, well, they were really low. We had five total cases in the county. Now, the interesting thing to see will be when school comes back in session after they've been out last week visiting with friends and gallivanting and drinking from the same garden hose. Are you even allowed to drink from a garden hose anymore? I mean, I grew up doing that. So, the Department of Public Health was able to get some vaccines specifically for our senior communities. The Department of Public Health has been in touch with Holy Comforter, Doggett Towers, and several other of our senior living communities to set up appointments to go to them to give the vaccinations, which I know was a huge concern for the council as well as ADPH and the Emergency Management Agency, because there's just, there are some individuals that can't drive to a clinic or can't go to a clinic. So, they are in the process of working on that now. We still have two more drive-through clinics that are in the process of being planned. One of those is going to be held at Carver. The other will be held at Elliott Community Center. The major holdup on that again is just getting enough vaccines in our area to be able to administer as many as we can. The goal to complete that is going to be by the end of the month, that we will be able to promote and get that information out there in enough time to where folks can make plans to attend one of the two drive-through clinics. And then, as everybody is probably aware, April 9th, the mask mandate will go away. The Governor has already publicly stated numerous times that it won't be extended, so that's something that we can certainly be excited about. I know it has been circled on my personal calendar for quite some time now, just knowing that there was an end. And having said that, though, let's don't just go out there and, you know, go crazy with, you know, the number of folks that were around. Let's continue to socially distance, good hygiene, you know, those sorts of things, but at least the masks will be going for a little while anyway. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions that I can, and if not, I'll get you an answer.
I have one.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for what you all are doing, number one. But when we get rid of the duty vaccinations then at Carver, can we publicize it more?
We can, yes.
Because I have a lot of elderly in my district, and they, they still haven't gotten a shot because they don't know where to go or who to call, or then when they do find out, they call and they on a waiting list.
Yes, sir.
Like, they didn't even know you could call, call it a life, because they were giving it.
Right.
So we just, I don't know how we could do a better job of getting that information out there.
Well, I think especially in the senior adult community, the folks that you're talking about, we can try to hit those neighborhoods with, you know, flyers. We've got teams of volunteers that we've used in the past to do not exactly the same thing, but following a tornado, for example, in South Side and Rainbow City. Back in 2018, we used volunteers to go basically door-to-door to, you know, to stick these on the doors of folks, so they would know where the Disaster Resource Center was. I don't, I don't think it would be a major challenge for us to do something like that if, you know, Director Gaither could, could make sure that we had the resources in place to do it. I know we've done similar things like that in the past.
Definitely appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you once again. Appreciate what you all do.
It takes a team. Y'all have a good day.
Real quick, one question. Am I correct that, has this happened yet, or is it already scheduled to happen where they're going to open it up to anybody being able to get the shot?
It has not yet, but it will be very soon. That is the, the next step. If you, if you noticed, they just recently opened it up to those 16 and older.
Right.
That have medical conditions or health conditions. So the next step after that-
Is everybody.
-will be, and again, the, the challenge, Councilman's going to be, you know, trying to make sure we've got enough vaccines-
Got enough vaccines, sure.
...to do it. I know the Johnson &amp; Johnson receiving that vaccine helped take off some of the stress for the, for the system, so, you know, hopefully, as we get more and more people vaccinated, it's that old, and you understand it well, supply and demand.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, as long as-
I just, I was having a conversation with some of the folks over at the hospital at Gaston recently, and they were talking, and I didn't realize this, once you puncture a vial, it maybe has 10, 12 doses in it, you got to use it all.
That's correct.
You got to throw it away.
That's correct.
So, I hate to see in an instance where there aren't enough elderly people to, to take the whole vial, and they just have to throw doses out in some situations if somebody's not there that can take it.
Well, and the, and the good thing, at least in, in the clinics and also with the first responder clinic, and also with some of the community clinics that have been done, there were none that were thrown out. We were able to find enough people, like the, for example, the one, the clinic that was held at the venue. We had about six or seven doses that was left.
Yeah.
And so-
That's great.
And so we ended up, you know, calling senior citizens that we knew that we could get there, were able to administer those vaccines, and, you know, we didn't have to waste any, which is a good thing.
Good deal. Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you.
I got a text from Dr. Mark Hill, who's our doctor, and he said that Gaston Pediatric had 400 doses of vaccine that they were going to give out, or they were going to do on Friday, so maybe you can contact, that's for 18 years and older, so that will be a good source to contact if they, if there's those in that range, probably the 16, but he said 18 and over. We will continue on our agenda for today. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting that was held on March 30th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of March 26 through April 1st.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
For instance, the Gaston Public Library is hereby recognized as the heart of the community, as it continues to enrich lives, inspire ideas, and create community each and every day. Libraries across the United States are also the heart of their own cities, towns, schools, and campuses, serving their communities. Whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that foster a sense of belonging and services extend far beyond the four walls of a building, and where everyone is welcome. Whereas for people lacking access to the internet at home, libraries provide free access to computers and Wi-Fi. Libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are diverse as the populations they serve, and ensure equity of access for all. Libraries offer opportunities for everyone to explore new worlds and become their best selves through access of technology, multimedia, content, and educational programs. Whereas in times of crisis, libraries, librarians, and library workers play an invaluable role in supporting their communities both in person and virtually. Whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. Whereas libraries have long served and trusted institutions for all members of the community, regardless of race, ethnicity, ability, gender identity, and socioeconomic status. Excuse my sinuses. Libraries have long served a trusted institution for all members of the community, regardless of race, creed, ability, gender identity, and socioeconomic status. The Gaston Public Library staff members are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Therefore, be it Rizal, I, Sherman Gaitan, Mayor of City of Gaston, to proclaim National Library Week, April 4th through 2021 in the City of Gaston, Alabama. During this week, I encourage all residents to visit the Gaston Public Library on College Street, along with its two branches in East Gaston and Alabama City, to access the valuable online resources we have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
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 ...assessing nuisance abatement liens for demolition work that has already been performed. And I'm going to call out the information for all five of these and anyone who wish to speak may come forward. And we also had consent during our pre-council to group them together as a motion. We have, the first item is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien at 318 Nunley Avenue, and this is in District 1, Am South Bank, State of Alabama, and right of redemption of Shirley T. Jennings, and the amount is $3,616.40. The next item is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien at 1208 Robinson Avenue in District 2, Carmen L. Crook and Jessie L. Bentley and care of Nicole Bentley and State of Alabama. This amount is $4,841.40. The next item is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien at 448 Kealan Avenue Alley in District 3, State of Alabama and redemption rights of Home Opportunity LLC, and this amount is $2,991.40. The next item is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien at 425 North 9th Street in District 3, State of Alabama, possible right of redemption of Tonya F. Porter and Suzie King Thornton Adams, and the amount is $4,516.40. And the last item, which is Item 16, is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien at 110 Victory Street in District 3, Mabel McFarlane and Gietra McFarlane, subject to mortgage in favor of the City of Gaston, $3,441.40. At this time, I ask the pleasure of the council.
Move to adopt.
Excuse me?
Do we need to give them an opportunity to come forward?
Is there anyone to come forward? The motion is made for all five of the liens to be adopted. Did I hear? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all five resolutions, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all five resolutions.
Our next item on...
May I ask a question about those, for a point of clarification on those properties?
Okay.
Or I can wait to invite the councilor, if you want me to.
Okay. Because according to my study of Robert Rules of Order, once a motion has been made and accepted, then there's no discussion on the motion.
Thank you.
Our next order, our next resolution awarding bid number 3446 for janitorial supplies, and the perch and agent has recommended awarding the bid to Edewall Chemical Sales and Service by utilizing local preference. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is a resolution awarding bid number 3449 for finished traffic signs, and the NEPA coordinator has recommended awarding the bid to Newman Signs. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is a resolution awarding bid number 3450 for unfinished traffic signs and signposts. The NEPA coordinator has recommended awarding the bid to Newman Signs. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any new business? Councilman Wilson.
Madam President, I have two. The first one is from the Engineering Department, awarding a bid number 3452 for the sanitary sewer bypass abandonment at Normco, doing businesses, Prince Metal Stamping, awarding the bid to Alabama Grading Excavation LLC. I'd like to ask for immediate consideration for this.
Clerk, will you take the vote? I mean, would you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Madam President, the next one is one that I'm super excited about. This is a request by the Engineering Department. This is a resolution authorizing the acquisition of property along South 11th Street. It's a total of 15 different parcels, which will get us one step closer to getting South 11th Street completely repaved with some sidewalks out there. It's going to be beautiful. Anyway, this is a resolution authorizing the acquisition of that property and I ask for immediate consideration.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay. Department reports is... Ms. Weatherford is not here, is she? Okay. We have a citizen request, Ms. Kendra Lee, social worker.
No worries, I'm a woman of few words, so I won't be up here long. I didn't want to do this. I'm just coming on behalf of those individuals in our community that have been deemed essential for the past year. I do want to bring forth my thanks. It has been appreciated because oftentimes, social workers are overlooked as being essential. We just celebrated Social Work Month last month, and that was our theme, social workers are essential. I'm also the field instructor for two master's programs, Jacksonville State University and the University of Alabama. I brought my interns with me today. Part of their field internship includes coming to a city council meeting. So this is the reason for us coming in here today and for you to kind of be reminded that social workers are essential and that we are in the community doing things, and it's not just those that people seem to think that come in and take your children. We do a lot more in the community, and I just thought it was important that we brought that forth. That's it.
Would you introduce your interns?
We have Cindy Humphrey. Can you stand up, Cindy? We have Kara Byron, and we have Tiffany Works. Tiffany and Kara attend Jacksonville State University, and Cindy is a student at University of Alabama, Roll Tide.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. She's also my sorority sister, so we're very glad, and we want to know that we do appreciate social workers because they are essential in our community and also for health care as well. At this time, we'll have remarks, council and mayor, Councilman Cannon.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to say a few words today that's coming from my heart, that I don't really understand some stuff that go on in Gaston, especially in Rainbow City and South Side. I've seen these signs that said, "Stop the rendering plant, stop the rendering plant." Well, I was under the impression that the City of Gaston Water Department could not run no water out there to that piece of property. Their west plant, sewage plant, could not handle that. How can you have a business if there was ever going to be a rendering plant? How could you have a business without water? Second, the land hadn't been sold. How can you have a business out there with the land not being sold? Third, I just don't understand, you know, that why everybody's on the uproar when all this stuff can't happen to begin with. This council hadn't got anything about voting on the plant being there and none of that kind of stuff. We hadn't got any of that stuff, said we need to vote on the plant. We hadn't got there. I don't think you can have a plant without water. I could be wrong, but I just don't think you can. And then, the next thing I want to talk about is the opposition to the rendering plant near the Gaston Airport. There's a lot of people in there saying this council takes bribes, this council's pocketing money, this council, it's a done deal, all this kind of stuff. Everything you see on there, people talk about us. Well, that's fine. I just wish you would get your story straight. I'm going to ask our city attorney and the mayor and President Toles, if they hadn't got the FBI in here or somebody to investigate all this, let's get them in here and investigate all this. Let's see the people that's talking about us. Let the FBI talk to them and see what they know, because somebody apparently knows a lot more than this council up here knows and this mayor. I've also heard that when the mayor's terms up, he's moving to Gulf Shores. Well, that's nobody's business where he moves. You know, you can't tell a person where they can live at when they retire. I mean, I don't tell y'all, or he don't tell y'all where to move. Second thing is, on that topic, I've got a, somebody said, "Follow the money. Look who's got a brand-new car in the driveway. Follow the money." Well, I take that as a, towards me, because I have, I bought a brand-new car and it's sitting in my driveway every day. If you can prove that car was paid with any kind of money, except the payments I made to the Family Savings Credit Union every month, let's go after it. Let's get the FBI in here. Let's see, let's get this story straight. I want to make sure that we're all on the same page, okay? What about the stuff that came from the IDA, all those little letters and stuff that the mayor's supposed to sign, the plant's coming, it's a done deal? 11/31 night, I got that on my internet, on the internet, and said, "You need to look at all this." Well, I looked at it. First time I seen it, how can y'all get stuff, or whoever got that, how can they get that when we can't get it? We don't get it. I don't understand that. There's a lot going on with this rendering plant that I don't understand, and I want to make sure I understand it. And if there's anybody up here taking money, let's get the FBI in here, let's prosecute them. If you know something that's going on up here, let's go ahead and get it out in the open. Let's find out what it is. I'm going to ask this council to not vote on anything to do with a rendering plan. If anything comes before us, today, we get a total investigation into all of this. If it takes two years, it don't bother me. I want to make sure we have a total investigation. I'm asking the lawyer, our legal man, the mayor and the president of the council, if we hadn't got an investigation going, let's get an investigation going. Let's see what's happening here. And if anybody can answer any of these questions I got, I'd be glad for you to tell me. I've seen texts I've got up here, said, "Well, you've got the mayor's ear, you can stop him." Mayor don't have no vote. These seven councilmen have votes right here. We're the one that votes. Mayor don't vote. Where you get, he votes. He don't vote for nothing. You know, stuff like that. I just don't understand. We're bringing the signs in here, you're welcome to come, you're welcome to fill this thing up after April the 9th, or whenever it is. But I'd like to have some answers. Who's pocketing the money? How is this a done deal with no water and no land being brought? And how come that when y'all set up the meeting, whoever set the meeting up, you know, this is, I would think this would have a lot to do with the City of Gaston also. You went down to South Side High School, you set up a meeting with people from Rainbow City and South Side, then you've had three or four more meetings, I think, at Westbrook School. How come there's no meetings in Gaston about this? Were the people of Gaston might could have come to them if they wanted to come? That's another question I'd like to answer, you know, but I've yet for anybody to answer all these questions. But if anybody would, I'd be glad for them to call me and let me know. And also, I stand behind these seven, these eight people up here. I don't think nobody took no money. This is not a done deal. You can't have a deal if there's no deal to have. So I just want you to go home and think about all this and see where I am. But I stand behind these guys up here, and they're just like me. We know as much as y'all know. Y'all know more than us. Some people out there can shake their head, they can be laughing underneath their mask, but that's fine, I said, but you know, I'm just telling it the way it is. Thank you, Ms. President.
Councilman Reed, you want to go next?
Well, I might as well. I think it's pretty well covered on that other side. My only dog in the fight, and I've said it before to all these guys, and I'm like, Johnny, I don't believe there's a person out of us eight that's taking any money. When I, when I said about a month ago, if we did, or you tempted, turn it down, tell them where to put it, and just kind of let it ride, okay? And what Johnny said is really coming from his heart. We all kind of feel the same way, but we just kind of let it slide for a while. My understanding is FBI is already in here and have been, but they work slowly. They don't work just quick, quick, quick. So we'll see how that comes out, if in fact they are here. I do want to congratulate the social workers. I think it's great that y'all are going in that field. A lot of people will wake up and appreciate y'all, because you have a really hard job, and you have to take it home with you. I realize that. So congratulations and thank you very much.
Councilman Worthy?
I just want to make a couple announcements about the vaccinations. This first one I'm going to make, this is from Quality Life, and I know a lot of people want their one shot, the Johnson &amp; Johnson. They'll be giving that one in Asheville, at Asheville City Hall. When is that? I messed it up. Now, let me give you the first one then. This is going to be Monday, April 26, Quality Life here in Gaston. The number to call to make your appointment is 439, what, 256-439-6404. That's the call to make the appointment for here in Gaston, and it's the Moderna shot, so that's the two-shot one. Now, let me see if I can't find the Johnson &amp; Johnson. Okay, it would be in Asheville. And that number to call is... Okay. It's going to be Wednesday, April 7, at Asheville City Hall, and the number to call is 256-439-6404. That's at Asheville City Hall, April 7, and that's the Johnson &amp; Johnson, if you want to go there for your one shot. Thank you. That's all I've got.
Councilman Back?
Scoot up here a little closer. Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to make a few announcements, not announcements, but just comments. First of all, we have a Merit Scholar finalist at Gaston City High School. Claire Tumlin is a Merit Scholar finalist, and Claire is a really fine young lady, comes from a great family, and Claire wants to go to medical school one day, and she'll make a fine doctor, or she'll make a fine whatever she chooses to become, but that's a really major accomplishment, I think. Some 16,000 students are chosen every year from all across all 50 states, and that's a really big deal. So congratulations to Claire Tumlin at Gaston City High School and the Tumlin family. Also, last week, we had some drainage issues. I had some calls. Of course, we had torrential rains and just storms and things like that. What that does is it also shows us where there's some drainage issue, I mean, where the drains are stopped up, and I'm probably guilty of this. We rake our yards and we put the leaves where the truck can pick it up, and then that usually is in the pathway of where the water will drain down into where the water's supposed to drain, but then the leaves and sticks get in there, and it clogs it up, just like your shower does at home after a period of time. You've got to get some Drano. We don't have Drano, but we have this big truck that goes around and blows and blasts all that stuff out of there. So I have taken some pictures of those areas. I was able to ride around where I knew, where I suspected where there were some stoppages, so I've turned those into public works, and I know they're going to be taking care of those just as soon as they can. We have those all over the city, so please bear with us. There's more rain coming, and they may not have gotten to your street yet to unplug that drain. Also, we had some garbage pickup that didn't happen in East Gaston. I had some calls last week. We, with Good Friday, the city was closed, so we shifted our routes. I believe those have been cleaned up probably by today. They've gone and retraced those routes and picked up your garbage over. This is in my district over by Gaston State Community College off of Payden Ridge. So apologize for that. We probably didn't communicate that as well as we could. We talked about that in pre-council of how we could maybe do a, do a better job of that. Also, want to recognize and thank our new social workers. Thank you, ladies, for choosing to go into that work. It is a very noble profession, and our prayers and blessings are with you as you embark on your new career. What a needed position for every community. So thank you for making that choice, and I feel certain that y'all will do a wonderful job, and thank you so much. Earlier, I had spoke out of turn about, I wanted to ask, I just wanted to make notice, I've seen some comments about our public hearings in these abatements, and you hear us all the time. Brian Harbison, our building department director, gets up and talks about, you know, this was filed in March of last year, no improvements have been done. So just to make sure, we have a lot of new faces, it seems, and to make sure everybody understands, what usually happens there is that families just abandon, for whatever reason, those, their property. It then kind of becomes the responsibility of the city, which is the taxpayers, okay? So just today, we had five liens assessed that total right at $20,000, and that's taxpayer money, that we spent to tear those houses down that were past the point of rehabilitation, have to scrape them, take them to the landfill, we have to pay a fee over there. And then, the owners of that property that have walked away from it, they don't pay us for that. They're supposed to pay us, but they don't. So then, we have to go through the process of assessing a lien to that property, and the owners really don't care. They don't fight it. If you notice, they weren't here today. They weren't here to pay us, and they weren't here to protest. So I think we have over 1,000 pieces of property in our land bank, and that's where those properties come from, is that over a period of decades, the city has just inherited unwillingly property that families have just walked away from. And it's up to the city to go in and to make those neighborhoods look better by either trying to rehab those houses, which usually doesn't happen, or we have to tear them down, and then it becomes a vacant lot. But if you live in those neighborhoods, you would prefer the vacant lot as opposed to having a house that is just ramshackled and animals and things are in there. I get calls all the time in my, from my district where they, where they want us to take care of it, because they haven't seen the family there for years, and nobody's taking care of the property. So it falls on the hands of the city and the building department and public works to take care of it. But ultimately, it falls on the taxpayer, because today, the taxpayers are going to have to absorb about $20,000 in costs that the city had to incur to clean those properties up. So if anybody wants to talk more about that or learn more about that, give me a call. I don't know everything. If I don't, I'll call Brian, and he'll tell me. But, you know, there is no effort to go in and take people's property. That's the last thing the city wants, is another parcel of property. Looks like we just got five today with the proud owner of five properties, because they're not going to pay it, and then it'll become ours. So it's just not, it's just the way that it work, and this happens in every city, in every county, in every state in the, in the country. So that's what I wanted to bring to everyone's attention. And then, last but not least, I was out of town last week, spring break vacation, but I believe Johnny Cannon had a birthday, so I wanted to wish Councilman Cannon a happy birthday. He called up with me, the magic age of 62, so happy birthday to Councilman Cannon. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes, ma'am. First, just some points of clarification. You guys saw where we awarded the janitorial supplies contract today, and it went to Edewall Chemical, and there was a reference to a law in Alabama that basically says, "We can give preferential treatment to local businesses on these contracts as long as they aren't 5% more than the lowest bidder." Normally, when you're bidding out stuff for the city, you have to take the lowest qualified bid, but there's an exception in there that says, "If there's a local vendor who's a little more expensive, you can select him over the lowest bid." So that's what we did with Edewall Chemical. That's us preferring to keep the money here in town. They were within that 5% variance, so even though they weren't the lowest bidder, we were able to award the contract locally. The other thing, point of clarification, I know y'all have heard me make comments about using immediate consideration, and so obviously, I introduced two resolutions today for immediate consideration. I want to clarify that. The first one was to fix a sewer issue in and around the Prince Metal Stamping building, which is undergoing an expansion right now, and basically, the whole project's on hold until we fix this sewer issue. So time is of the essence. That's the reason we introduced it today. We just discovered it, and so we wanted to get that knocked out. The other thing is the South 11th Street, the acquisition of all the right-of-way properties that we need to move forward with South 11th Street. The goal is to get the Alabama DOT to let that project in July, and what we would run into is if we didn't go ahead and acquire that property right away, we could potentially jeopardize our chance to get on the schedule in July, which means it'd be another three, six months before we would get an opportunity to actually get the project started. So we introduced it today for immediate consideration, so that we could make sure that we hit that July deadline and we can get that project done. The last thing, I just, a couple of quick thank yous. Thank you to the Gaston Public Library. I spent my whole life inside that building. They do awesome work. I think it's one of the oldest libraries in the state of Alabama. It is a really great resource that we have here in Gaston. Thank you to the social workers for everything you do. Again, it's a thankless job, and you don't always get the recognition you deserve. Thank you to the Engineering Department, Heath, for the project over on Cherry Street. That looks awesome. It makes the flow of traffic as you come off Randall and turn into town so much better. I mean, it looks great. And then, finally, I was out last week, so I didn't get to say thank you to Mr. Peter Gregerson. Mr. Gregerson sent us all a copy of his book, The Golden Rule. You can go on YouTube, I think it's Golden Rule, Peter Gregerson is what you would search. But anyway, just really thoughtful and kind words from Mr. Gregerson, and encouraging words for leadership and everybody. So we've all heard it before, but if you get a chance, dust off the old Golden Rule book and revisit it. That's all I have, Madam President.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am. Going back to some of the stuff Johnny was talking about, you know, we have a senator who decides to, what he wants to pass, he doesn't ask the governing body, and that's the opposite way they do things in Montgomery. You always find out what the governing body wants, and then you try to pass a bill. And the bill that what he's talking about is about the occupational tax. And I can tell you, we can give you the number of several hundred thousand dollars. Nonprofits won't have money, paving, no police, no fire. It would be a disaster if he gets his way. And the bill was put down where it didn't go, and it came back because he got involved and brought it back up again. So I don't know where that stands, but you might want to talk to your legislative people. You know, that bill doesn't need to pass. He needs to come ask us what we need to do. And I was accused of bullying him. Well, I felt like the city council and the mayor's office has been bullied for the past six months about misinformation, and I know what I'm talking about, and I know who they are, and some of them are always here, and that's good. I'm glad you're here. Maybe you can really figure out what's going on instead of what you want to go on. So anyway, that's about all I got to say.
Did you have an announcement to read, Mayor?
Ma'am.
Did you have an announcement to read?
An announcement?
Did you have?
I don't think so. Oh. I do now.
I do now. Anyway, Governor Kay Ivey has said that she plans to let the state's mask mandate expire at the end of this week. If and when that happens, it will affect the state as a whole, but cities are still able to have their own rules in place. The City of Gaston plans to continue to require masks in city facilities until April 30th, which is the end of the month, in order to provide more time for other protective measures like the vaccine to be effective. Things are trending in a positive direction. COVID-19 case numbers are down, and the vaccine eligibility has been open to everyone aged 16 and up in Alabama. And private businesses may institute their own rules, but this will only be for city facilities. Thank you.
To answer Councilman Cannon's question, I was always told you don't follow up a lie, so I'm not going to get the FBI to come to try to follow up any kind of lies. But we just have to stand firm. The other thing is that I only have one vote, and I'm going to vote the way I desire to vote, and I'm not going to let anybody tell me how to vote. I call for a motion to adjourn.
Before we go, I just got to clarify something, because I don't want people thinking we're taking people property. And what Councilman Back said, that we acquired those five properties, we may later on down there.
properties, we may later on down the line, but I would like for, uh, the, uh, building God expected to tell us how to, please spell it out how it worked. Just because we putting a lien on it, that's to try to recoup our money.
That's the key word, that's the key word.
Right.
Just a lien.
It's just a lien. We're not gonna take that property. So can you just explain that? Because I, I, I don't want to talk for you, uh, Councilman Back, but I just don't want people to have a wrong impressing, impression, because they have been saying that on, on, on the internet.
Okay, once, once we receive a resolution from the council, then, uh, first thing we'll do is have the utilities retired at that structure, and then we'll send the notice to proceed to Public Works. Normally, when they're in a certain community, they'll take care of everything where they have an order to proceed, and then once the structure's removed, they'll send us, uh, a bill, an invoice for the total cost, which is based on the weight of, of that structure. And then once we receive the bill, we'll send that bill to all the registered owners that were listed on that title opinion, give them an opportunity to pay or make payments. Uh, some of those take advantage of that, some of them will make a few payments and then stop, and we'll go through an encouragement period where we'll, uh, we'll encourage them to continue those payments. And then once, uh, once all of those avenues are played out, no communication with our department, no payments have been made, then we'll schedule a hearing such as we did today, and we will assess a lien on those properties. That is a municipal lien for the demolition amount, and that lien is actually recorded in, uh, in, in the probate office. So when you search that title, you'll find that lien is recorded against that property. The property owner still maintains control of that property unless they've let the taxes go back to the state, or they've sold that property. But in order to obtain clear title, somebody will have to satisfy that lien. Uh, and we have, uh, as of today, we probably have in excess of a couple, a couple of million dollars' worth of, uh, demolition liens on properties through the years. Is that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
I have one, uh, Mr. Harbison. How, on a percentage-wise of what we did today, and first of all, thank you, uh, Councilman Worthy for, for pointing out that, that error that I made. Uh, what percentage of these properties today will go back to the owner?
Well...
That, in other words, they will satisfy the lien and, and make the payment?
Usually, ten percent or less will actually step forward and, and, um, and take advantage of, um, of a payment program that will provide to them. Most of them just let them go. Um, at, at some point, that lien could be added to the tax bill. Uh, the problem we have run into is that, uh, you've got a piece of property that, where, uh, the appraised value by the county may be two thousand dollars, you add a five thousand dollar demolition lien on top of that, that property is never gonna be sold. So what we've done, or what, uh, the city clerk's office has, uh, has actually recommended, and, and it has worked out fine, is that those liens are still recorded against the property, but they're not added to the tax bill. And that way, if an individual next door wishes to come forward and satisfy that lien, or a portion of that lien, then that gives the council the opportunity to negotiate with them. Once that lien is added to the tax bill, there's no separating the two. You have to pay the full amount, or the city has to pay the full amount.
I think that was probably the point. I probably skipped a step or two, but I was trying to make a, a, paint a picture of, of what we do and then how we do. I didn't know we had two million dollars sitting there of taxpayer money that's in, invested in those, in those properties, but that's, uh, and that goes into what the mayor was saying about the occupational bill. I mean, you gotta have the full picture before you start taking away a, a city's revenue source that represents twenty-nine percent of our revenue, which is the occupational tax represents twenty-nine percent of our revenue. We've got two million dollars sitting there, we've got about a million dollars in bad residential garbage debt that I'm gonna be bringing up a, a motion here to the council in the very near future of, of how we're gonna change that. Uh, you know, we, there's, there's holes in the bucket that we need to plug, and we don't need a big hole of, of removing our, our, or one of our main sources of revenue. There's just a lot of things that, and I've said before, that was not thought through. That was not thought through all the way of the ramifications, that something like that puts on the taxpayers of the City of Gaston. I know there's a lot of people that are in favor of removing that, but you gotta think about the unintended consequences of if that's removed. Uh, the library, for example, we're bragging on the library today. There's a, uh, I think we spend over one point two million dollars a year, the City of Gaston does, to have that library. It's used, uh, by the City of Gaston residents, but it's also used by the county residents. Jason said he spent most of his life there, Councilman, uh, Wilson did. He lived in Southside during that time when he was in high school, using the Gaston Public Library. That's what it's there for. It's for the whole county. So I could go on and on about what we spend, that it's, it's for the entire county. But thank you, Councilman Worthy, for bringing that up, and thank you, Mr. Harbison, for giving a better explanation than I gave.
All right.
Mr. Harbison, uh, could you kind of speak about the grass? Last year, we didn't cut any grass because of COVID, and tell the people here how much better it would be if they would cut their own grass that got high, how we send the letters out, and what's gonna happen when they go pay their tax bill at the end of the year that's next year? What they gonna get a surprise about on there?
Okay. As of two weeks ago, our department, uh, provided Public Works with a list in excess of a thousand state-owned lots in the City of Gaston. Now, not all of those lots are overgrown. I would say probably seventy-five to eighty percent are, and are, are not maintained throughout the year. What that does is allow the Public Works grass crews to go out and monitor those lots, and they'll, they have, uh, my understanding is they have maybe twelve or thirteen cut areas throughout the city. And so those state-owned lots and some city-owned lots are actually provided in those cut areas. And so once Public Works is in the area, they see a lot that's overgrown, if it's on their list, is either being state-owned, city-owned, or privately owned, then they're authorized to, uh, to cut that property. And, and the process is that they will take a picture before, uh, they'll take a picture after it's cut, they'll provide that to us, and at some point at the end of the grass season, we'll notify those property owners and give them an opportunity to pay those grass bills, make payments. Uh, and at, at the end of that process, if nobody's communicated or come forward, then we'll, uh, begin to schedule those for a public hearing. It's same process. Those, uh, those grass liens, uh, different than the demolition liens, are actually assessed against the property and added to the tax bill, uh, because folks will, uh, be more out to pay a two or three hundred dollar grass bill to keep that property in their name, uh, versus allowing it to go to the state. So we've, we've been very successful in the last couple of years of, uh, recouping our, our money that's spent on grass cutting.
I just didn't want anybody to think that the city was gonna come and cut your yard free and not try to get the money back, and if, you know, you go up there and pay your taxes, say your taxes is a hundred and sixty dollars, and you got a three hundred dollar grass lien on it, that's four hundred and sixty dollars you'll have to pay to keep that property. I mean, it's just, we're just trying to get our money back through the grass cutting.
Yeah, if, if, if our equipment lands on your property, there's gonna be a charge. It, it's not free.
I call for a motion to adjourn.